All right, call this meeting to order. Jeff, can you please call roll?
I'm Mr. Duffy. I'm just running the computer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Powitz?
Here.
Mr. McNulty?
Here.
Mr. Bellis?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Mr. Beard? Legal counsel, Ms. Donna? And Mr. Beare?
Here.
Mr. Duffy is here.
On to new business. So the first application tonight is for application 0N-22-04, Evans Farm, Single Family Plan District. Robin, do you want to go through the staff report, please?
Sure. So you have before you rezoning case 22-04. The applicant is Evans Farm Land Development Company. The site is all parcels within Evans Farm's Single Family Plan Residential District. Acreage is roughly 425 and 1/2 acres. It is currently zoned, Single Family Plan Residential. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the currently effective zoning development plan for the Evans Farm Single Family Plan Residential District approved under applications 15-0105, 17-07, 19-03, 20-02, 21-04, and 21-06 of Evans Farm Land Development Company. This amendment is requesting a reduction in the alley width within Evans Farm. Surrounding area to the north is planned residential in Berlind Township, which is also Evans Farm. South is farm residential, mostly single-family homes within Old Lewis Center Village. To the east is Single Family Plan Residential with Bryn Mawr and Meadows at Lewis Center subdivisions. To the west is also farm residential district, single-family homes and the railroad which goes north-south. Summary of the zoning development plan changes incorporated in the applicant's amendment request. This is relatively short and sweet. The change will be private alleys shall be 15 feet in width instead of 20 feet in width. The only comments that staff had upon reviewing the application. When the application was submitted, applicant indicated that the requested amendment would affect both the Single Family Planned Residential District portion of Evans Farm and also the Planned Commercial District. Staff would like clarification from the applicant as to whether this affects the PCD area of Evans Farm in addition to the single-family portion.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to cover the request and why and name and, you know, name and address, please?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Tony Ironman. I'm with Evans Farm. Our address is 2105 Evans Farm Drive, Lewis Center 43035. I'll give it, as Robin said, it's short and sweet. I'll do a very, do my best to do short and sweet as well. About 18 months ago or so, the township approached Evans Farm and requested we simplify and consolidate, with staff's help, our two big binders of zoning text, which we did. And about six months ago or so, it was simplified and consolidated. And with tremendous help from staff and the township as a whole, we were able to get it approved. It works incredibly well. In fact, we got other townships ask us how we can do a spreadsheet for land uses and how we can do our restrictive text with setbacks and building heights and everything in the spreadsheets. So kudos to all involved and especially the township, township staff on that. Due to uncontrollable timing, there was one item that left, that was left to be addressed. And we knew it was going to come. And staff and I met a couple of months ago and we thought it's probably best just to get it finished. The item is the alley width. And in the last several months, we've worked with Chief McNeil, Lieutenant Clark, State Fire Marshal's office, the Township Development Zoning Office, and Michelle Bonney has been effective and very helpful as well in pulling this together. Shortly after the first year, we got a letter from the fire marshal that said that because, for his various reasons, that the alleys did not need to be 15 feet. And it was really up to the township. Chief McNeil had written a letter supporting the alley reduction. For the sake of Robin's point, this is for the Single Family Planned Residential area. This is the residential area is only reduction from 20 feet to 15 feet in width. Retail areas, the drives, the parking aisles, all the drives, public roads, everything in the retail area is not affected at all. It's not, no request done at all. So that's the specific to the zoning text. On page 38 of the zoning text, we're asking to delete the section three, section seven, paragraph three says, "Private alley shall be located in selected areas to provide rear access to single-family lots. Alley shall be 20 feet in width, located with easements. Private alleys will be maintained by the HOA." And in its place, we're asking to be inserted the exact same text. "Private alley shall be located in selected areas to provide rear access to the single-family lots. Alley shall be," this is the change, "15 feet in width, located with easements. Private alleys will be maintained by the HOA." That's, that's our request and that's what we're here this evening simply for that. It wasn't quite as short as I'd hoped. It's, I heard. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one. So Tony, remind me again, are these alleys one-way or?
Right now, they're two-way.
They're two-way?
Yeah.
And trash is picked up in the alleys, correct?
Yes.
That's where, so, I mean, I, me personally, and just speaking for me, I don't necessarily have an issue with 15 feet. I think we talked about this in the past, the alleyways, but with two-way, you know, traffic and if there's, you know, trash bins and things being loaded back there, obviously it'll get a little tight. I think it, you know, you have seven, seven and a half feet or so, but you take out a little space for the trash cans and things back there, you know, potentially it could be a, but I think it's, you know, at 15 feet, it's still a cheat. I mean, it's still, it's not an issue to me, so.
What was the origin from the township?
I can, I can respond to that. And I don't mean to speak out of turn. The previous fire chief isn't, is no longer with the township, but his goal was to have it wide enough that they could put the outriggers on the ladder truck on the alley and continue to fight a fire that way. Our position at this point is 20-foot alleys are not able, they're not affordable. They simply, they're almost the same price as a public street out front. The cost to put the outriggers in simply doesn't benefit us as much as it ought to. If we, and honestly, and it's not intended as an ultimatum by any means, but if, if we have to maintain 20-foot alleys from here on, then we're just probably going to get rid of all the alleys from here on, simply because it's just not affordable. From a planning and a livable space, the alleys in their 20-foot width and the streets out front, they're 25-foot width or so. There's no hierarchy separation between the public space out front and the private space in the back either. 15-foot alleys are, in our research across the country, 15-foot alleys are pretty acceptable. And with that, that's, that caused us to go in that direction. We still want to do the alleys. We like the alleys. We think taking the, as many driveways off the front of the streets as we can is desirable. I'm not saying we're going to get rid of all of them, but we can get rid of many in using the alleys that way. Certainly improves the streetscape and the ambiance and the feel, you know, as you walk up and down Evans Farm Drive or along Piot Road or pick any of the streets in section one on the, on the west side. It really does contribute to the ambiance and the feel of the community. We like that. We want to continue to do that, but at 20-foot alleys, we, we can't afford that. It's just price of all the materials and the labor and everything has just gone up dramatically.
But when you first proposed, you proposed 20-foot?
We did. The fire chief insisted.
The fire?
Yeah. I want to make sure that it's clear, we.
And, and so at that time, and I apologize, I.
That's okay.
Did you request a variance at that time?
Yeah. There isn't a variance needed because there was no standard.
Okay.
He just asked for it and just keep the whole zoning of everything moving forward. We agreed to it. We, we've studied it since a lot.
Okay.
I've spent hours and hours and hours simply looking into alleys across the country in every municipality or any place that has alleys. And, and actually gone out and visited other communities and, you know, other new urbanism communities and found that many have 15 feet. Some have less. I don't think less is a good idea, but.
Any other comments?
I have a similar comment. We answered the one-way or two-way if we have any other concern. I was also worried about in terms of trash or whatever, especially if a garbage truck is coming one-way, I'm not sure how it'll pass through the other way. Are they labeled that they're private alleys and not public streets?
They're on the plat that way, yes.
Okay, but are they labeled so that visitors know not to cut through them?
Out on the, out on the streets or out on the?
Yeah.
No, there's no, and it's pretty obvious, especially you start to narrow them.
Okay. And I'm assuming there's no parking on the alleys?
There's no parallel parking, right.
Okay.
There's head-in parking into the garages.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no parallel parking on the alleys.
Right.
So that was my other concern. If cars start parking, then there's no way they're going to be able to get through.
Right.
And I'm assuming there's signs that say there's no parking on the alleyways?
Nope.
Okay.
But I can prom, I shouldn't say promise. I would expect if we went out there now, you would not find any parallel parking out there. It's just, it's private. People have, people recognize this is my access to my driveway and my neighbor's driveway. And I've not ever noticed that there was ever any parallel parking in the grass. And I, I say this partly, people invest a lot of money to get their grass and their shrubs to grow out back and they're not going to park on it and kill it just because. So I've not seen any parallel parking, nor have I had any indication anyone would ever do that. There are people that stop to load, you know, whatever in a truck or something, but not permanent or not long-term parking, not more than 15 minutes or 20 minutes.
And I mean, those are my major concerns with alleyways.
Yeah.
That we've seen in the past is that if it's one-way, I don't have any problems with it. If it's two ways, then I get concerned about like the trash picked up, the, you know, trash trucks. And if people were parking and we can load things like that, that cause congestion on alleyways. And so that's why I'm asking if they, one-way, if there's signs that they're private. I know that all the residents know that it's private. I'm not sure if their guests or visitors know.
Well.
And that's why I brought it up.
The 20-foot alleys really make it very difficult to tell the difference between the public and the private space.
That's why also I asked.
The, the two-way also allows, if there is a truck, a trash truck that's working in the alley and I pull out of my driveway, I see the truck, I go the other direction. So there's, there's some benefit to going both directions too. If you pull out of your driveway and four lots, I mean, the, the blocks aren't terribly long anyhow. So if a trash truck is down in several lots and you pull out, you either expect to wait or you pull back in and turn around and go the other way. So is it, the, if the blocks were much longer, then it would become far more of an issue of keeping them one-way. But the two-way actually gives them some flexibility that way.
Yeah, those are my major comments, things to think about. Partially because where I grew up, the streets were very narrow and people knew to pull over if there was a car coming at you.
It's the two-way dance.
Exactly. Which I realize people in Columbus have not all adopted that as I drive through the short north. So that was one of my concerns. So as long as the residents have an understanding of how it works, I do know, like you said, that the fire chief at one time required everything to be 20. You're willing to go down to 15. But for them, for me, it's more of a safety thing. And if they don't have an issue with it. I was curious as to where that extra footage is going to go. You're reducing them by five feet. Does everybody get two and a half feet larger yard or?
Well, the, the lot lines on all the houses that use alleys, the lot line is the center of the alley.
Okay.
So the intention.
In the olden days, where your property line was in center of the road.
Yeah, yeah. And there's easement across it, so, you know, you can't wall off your little piece of the, your 10 feet or seven and a half feet of the alley. There is access easements for, and it's on the plat that way. So they get another two and a half feet of grass or open space.
Okay. I was just curious.
In the back of their house. Basically, it takes their cars another two and a half feet off the pavement, which isn't bad either.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Public comment? Anything? Else, Robin, before?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Can I get a motion to recommend approval for zoning application 0N-22-04 regarding Evans Farms SFPRD?
Moved by Dennis McNulty to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees the approval of zoning application 0N-22-04 of Evans Farm Land Development Company LLC, requesting the amendment of the currently effective development plan, Evans Farm Single Family Plan Residential District SFPRD. Applications 15-0105, 0N-1707, 0N-19-03, 0N-21-04, and 0N-2106. Further move, this recommendation is for amendment in accordance with the changes to the development text submitted by the applicant, age of which are stamped received with Orange Township voting above March 25, 2022, superimposed over received by Orange Township voting. Further move that all portions of the previously approved application development plan of application 15-0105 is modified by application 0N-17-07, 0N-19-03, and 0N-21-04, and 0N-21-06 that are not changed herein, I'll continue in full force and effect.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Powitz?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Tony. This one we do is coming from the other. Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right. Now on to old business to discuss the RCOD amendments hearing continuation from 4/12/2022. Robin, do you want to go through the staff report, please?
Sure. So, and I will clarify that all the items I'm mentioning in the staff report are changes from the previous time that we met. So the, the changes that we initially made are not mentioned in this staff report. Rather, these are changes that were made from our previous meeting. So the summary, again, Orange Township Board of Trustees passed resolution 21-314 on September 2021, imposing a moratorium on the filing of all applications in the Orange Township Route 23 corridor overlay district, Article 20 of the Orange Township zoning resolution till January 1, 2022, in order for township staff and legal counsel to review the provisions of Article 20 and recommend revisions. That moratorium was extended until July 1, 2022, through resolution 21-393 adopted December 2021. The zoning commission did hear this case at our previous meeting on April 12 and continued it to tonight's meeting. So going through the changes based on your feedback, so in section 20.031 for the subareas, there was discussion about raising the caps to allow more residential units within each subarea. So we took a slightly different approach to this wherein we did not actually change the numbers in the caps, but what we did was that we changed the text so that it said the residential units that were already zoned or built in other zoning districts within the segment areas will no longer count toward the unit caps in each segment. So previously, any residential units that were in those subareas, even if they were not in the RCOD overlay, they still counted towards these unit caps. So we have removed that. The biggest change is in segment two. So there would, previously, there were only 17 available units and now there are 305. So in segment one, there are still zero units left as all 400 units have been taken through Orange Summit. Segment two, 425 total units, there are 305 units left in segment two. Segment three, total of 350 units. There are 294 remaining units in segment three. In section 20.04, procedure, again, based on feedback from this commission, the schedule has been changed within 20.04G. The Board of Trustees shall now hold a public hearing within 30 days after the zoning commission work session rather than the 45 days that was previously. In 20.04N, item seven was added, which states that any increase in the number of dwelling units would constitute a major amendment. So it doesn't matter how many units are added, any increase in any number of residential units within an application would qualify as a major amendment and would require, going through the amendment process rather than administrative approval. Section 20.08, in the mixed-use subareas, we did add two-family residential unit buildings and three-family residential buildings as permitted uses in the mixed-use subarea. I believe that was something we just kind of, when we combined the previous multifamily and mixed-use sections, that was just something that, well, we missed when combining those sections. So those have been added to reflect that. Section 20.09, general standards, we did, based on expert fact-finding from Mr. Beard, we did discover that Bradford pear is planned to be added as an invasive species in Ohio as, by ODNR, so that it will no longer be permitted for street trees in Ohio. So we did update our language to reflect that, not specifically the Bradford pear, but prohibiting any plant species or tree identified as an invasive species in Ohio, prohibiting that from the RCOD. We also added language in 20.09J that adds crossbuck fences as a permitted type of fence. In the definitions section, section 20.12, based on your feedback, again, thank you, we missed that, this on our first pass, definition for crossbuck fence was added, just to clarify the specifics of that. We did also, we changed the definition for some of our residential units. For three-family residential unit buildings, there is no longer a height requirement for the building. Units are now permitted to be above one another. They were not previously. The definition of townhome was changed. Again, there is no longer a height requirement for the building. And the definition of two-family residential unit buildings was also changed. Again, there is no longer a height requirement for the building and units are now permitted to be above one another.
50-foot height requirement in the code is gone?
No, so that was, the 50-foot height requirement remains. That was, we, when we were discussing in the previous meeting about 15 feet versus the story and a half discussion, we essentially, we removed that requirement. So there's no minimum requirement. There is still a maximum requirement.
20.04, that's a major amendment. Actually, that's what we, out of some of that, it states that any increase in the number of dwelling would constitute a major amendment.
Correct.
Meaning, very much.
So this was something that we looked at and we, Jeff, are you able to pull up 20.04 in the code? major and minor. So major amendments must go through the, the public approval process. So first, again, it would go through a zoning commission work session and then to the township trustees for final approval, you know, similar to any other planned development amendment that is, that is currently. So the, we now have seven specific categories which qualify as a major amendment. So an increase in 5% or more in setback reduction, an increase in 5% or more on lot coverage, an increase in 5% or more on any building or any structure height, an increase in 5% or more on signage height, setback, sign area, a substantial change in building materials, decrease in 10% or more on landscaping and screen features, and an increase in the number of dwelling units. So any of those would be required to go through the public approval process. If it's, if an amendment is not captured within those requirements, then staff can determine if other proposed amendments are substantial, therefore must be approved by the township trustees. Otherwise, in subsection two, minor amendments, within 15 days of the submission of a written application specifically detailing the changes requested along with a revised development plan, the zoning inspector may administratively approve a minor amendment.
Go back up again.
So let's just to clarify more, that this would be, say Cheswick Village had 56 units that were approved in that development text and they came back and said, well, we want to increase it to 75 or to 60, then they have to go through the major amendments. So it was already approved at that other unit size. So any increase in that dwelling unit number would have to go through a major.
And then the line staff can determine if other pre-proposed amendments are substantial and therefore must be approved by the township trustee, then staff will approve it.
Most likely, that, that would probably be something that we'd reach out to legal counsel to determine how to fall under, kind of just as a catchphrase in case something weird comes up that we're not thinking of, major change or something.
So any other board comments on the provisions that we had discussed and the changes that were made from the last meeting?
I think they got most of them. I know at one time we were talking about adding additional graphics to try to help explain. additional graphics to try to help explain the intent, what some of these things are in terms of the excuse. Is that sort of not going to happen or happen slowly or?
Ideally, it would happen. And I think it's something, especially with our major code rewrite that is upcoming, it's something that we're certainly considering. With the timetable that we have for this amendment, I don't know that it's realistic that we're going to be able to come up with all the graphics that we would like.
There's still like another chance to, dare I say, tweak this in terms of graphics when we do the major code?
Sure.
Okay.
And that was something that was discussed. I know that, you know, there's some ticky-tack items that could have been here or there, but because there is going to be a more global revision, saving the ticky-tacks for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there anything that the board has that would be in addition to what we just went through in the staff report, maybe something that we may have missed from the previous meeting, or anything that is in the text that you wish to discuss? All right. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. We're going to, please state your name and address if you wish to speak tonight. Please stick to the merits of this specific case and try to limit the comments to three minutes if you can, please.
Hey, Mark Freeman, 478 Glenside Lane in Powell. My, my property is adjacent to Cheswick Village, and I am just curious as to how the change in cap for that section, subarea, is potentially going to impact that. And if they decide that they would like to change the number of units that they're putting in to take advantage of the increase there, would that trigger the 5% limit that would make it a major revision, which would require it to go through the whole Board of Trustees? Or would changing the cap just sort of inherently make it so that was an approval? I'm just unclear.
So, so any, any increase under the RCOD in residential units would qualify as a major amendment, but even if it's one unit?
Oh, okay. So it's not even the 5%. A single unit increase would require a Board of Trustees?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
That's what number seven here on that major amendment that we added would cover. Then also with the cap, currently that's the only one that counts towards the cap currently. So it, cap hasn't changed for that segment. The units that are available are still the same, that were available when that went through.
Okay. So it would be highly unlikely that there would be any change in the number of units that we're getting dealt there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other public comment? Anything remaining from the board? Yes? Robin, is there anything you have in addition to?
No, I have nothing further.
Can I get a, a motion to recommend approval of zoning case, zoning case ZON-22-01 with modifications?
Just reading the title is fine.
Perfect. All right.
Mr. Powitz?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Hey. Unless we have anything else?
I did want to mention two things. So one, you all have a piece of paper in front of you that says you're invited. We would like to mention, this is an event that we are holding as part of our zoning resolution rewrite. So we are holding an open house for zoning here in this room on May 11 from 6 to 8 p.m. So this is a chance for the public to come in, learn about zoning, what zoning is, what zoning does, ask questions of staff, and be able to provide a little bit of feedback as to what they would see, you know, code rewrite. So we would encourage all of you as zoning commission members to attend. We would also love any help that you can provide in spreading the word. So tell your friends, tell your family, tell your neighbors. Please come to that event. The other item that I'll mention is that we did, through our OTAC, which is Orange Township Outreach and Communications Committee, we did create a subcommittee through that committee, which is a liaison subcommittee specifically for zoning and land use. And so that is, the purpose of that subcommittee, at least for the immediate future, is to serve as a little bit of a sounding board and also a messaging, messaging avenue for us to be able to spread the word about, about events like this and our code rewrite. We do anticipate meeting with them a few times as staff, just to kind of get some, some feedback as to kind of the things that we're thinking about with code amendments. I don't know that that subcommittee will interface with this board directly, but it, just so that you are aware, that that subcommittee will now exist.
Thank you. Anything else, anybody?
All right. Well, with that, meeting.